May I call the Board of Education meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on Thursday, July 31, 2025? In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on June 30, 2025. The Daily Record, the Star Ledger, and Parsippany Focus, tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham.
Here.
Mr. Barrios.
Here.
Mr. DeVito.
Here.
Mrs. Mayer.
Here.
Mr. Rea.
Here.
Mrs. Chappell.
Here.
Dr. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Cogan.
Here. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is a special meeting. Mr. Andrew Troppo, Vice President of the Board of Education, resigned on May 22, 2025, after completing 17 years of service to the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education. Tonight, we are here to interview for that board seat that will run through December 2026. So we have to, you know, discuss our process on how we're going to do this. And the front of your packet has the interview schedule, so everybody was given a specific time. Ms. Benos will be the one bringing the candidates, you know, out of the back room and to the public session. They will, they're free to remain in the public session after their interview session, after their interview. And then after all the interviews are done, we will have a hearing of the public, and then we can ask to go into executive session. So I think the only other thing we need to decide is which questions each particular board member would like to ask the candidate. I don't know that we will be able to get through all of them, so we will also have to decide if there's a specific order we would like to ask the questions in to see if there's, you know, higher priority questions. Mr. DeVito's already asked to do number 12, so if anybody else has a particular one they would like to ask, let me know. We would like to be consistent among all the candidates, so like Matt asked for number 12, so he will ask number 12 of all the candidates. Can I do eight? Judy would like number eight.
I have a question.
Sure.
The second candidate just came in and they said that their friend had a call, which I didn't get a confirmed call. We do not have his name or his resume, so I asked him to forward the email that he sent in. He said he forwarded to me, he said he did to, 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 to Dr. McHugh on July 22. He wants to know if he can still come in to me since it looks like he did forward it to us. Should we print it out and make it number eight?
Is there any problem with that?
No. Yeah, as long as we're saying.
The one he forwarded to, he does say the 27, but we didn't get it. It could have.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm checking and searching. Are you things have happened?
There any other ones?
Will you be able to print something out and give it to us so that we can see?
Thank you.
Is there any other ones in spam? No. No, well, there were two, but we got those.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have to speak number eight.
Yeah.
Anyone have number seven? I'll take it.
Allison, I could do number 10.
Tim, do you have a?
Allison, can I do number 10?
10. Yep. Sheethol has 10. Wendy or Tim?
Number four, please.
Number four. So we have Wendy, Michelle on our. Let's see which one Michelle and I want, and then we'll see.
Because we don't have to ask everything.
No, we definitely, I don't think we'll have time to ask everything, even if we wanted to. Michelle, do you, do you have a preference?
Um. I'm going to say six. Could I have number six, please?
I'm going to do number 11. I'm going to do number 11. First of all, do we care what order any of these are, or do we want to just assume we're going to make it through all eight questions?
Just to keep it simple, if a candidate is being asked, you know, you just start one end and go around, and then the next can go the other way.
Yeah.
Is that, I don't feel being, I just. Are we giving them time limits on answering?
I think we ha, I think we should tell them that they have 15 minutes and we expect to ask eight questions. How's that? So that they kind of have to.
So that's like one minute per answer?
Well, a half.
To just keep it to one, because we have to take time to ask the question.
Yeah.
And then a minute to answer, so that would take up to 15 minutes easy.
Yeah. The ability to answer themselves is an important skill. Allison's 11, and Matt is 12.
So if we get, if we get through all eight, Sheethol, did you want to ask a second one?
Um.
I don't know that we'll ever get through all. The only problem, Matt, with going one direction and then the other direction is that some people may answer, like, these five questions and the other people may answer those five questions.
Oh, if we don't get to all eight.
Yeah.
Allison, what I would say is can we just keep the order of the, like, can we just ask in the order of questions? Like, even if we don't get to all of them, can we just ask in the numerical order? So the ones that are already.
But then Matt will always get.
They'll always be last.
Yeah.
And you'll always be last.
And well, my next question was going to be, is there, you know, like.
If we do one like this, one one way and one the other once, and then as we get to the rest of them, we do every, every other person, and then go back the other way, and the way we, it's always, it's going to hard to track. If we skip one person and then go back to others.
I mean, I know it's generally.
Like, Jack, Judy, Allison, and then go on the way, swing back, Michelle.
I think it's just going to be very hard to compare people if they've answered different questions.
Yeah, we should probably just go in numerical order.
For the purpose of consistency.
Whoever's doing each question, go in numerical order, otherwise we're going to not know what, where we are on this thing. Well, each has her own, each has her own question, so I'm saying is that.
No, but I think we.
You don't ask them in the same order every time.
So why don't we do it this way? Wendy and I will go after Matt, just to make sure that Matt's question isn't always the one, like, Wendy, you know what I mean? We're kind of going to go three to, or four, I guess. We're going to start with four. And then we'll do Matt, then we'll do Wendy's, then mine. Then we'll come back. So Matt is going to sneak in after Judy.
Sorry, I've lost track now. What?
We're going to start with, we're going to start with Mr. Barrios. Okay. Because he picked number four. Okay. We're going to go right down the line. Okay. After Judy's number eight, we're going to go to Matt, who's really doing number 12, but doesn't want to get skipped, and I don't blame him.
Yeah. Yeah.
But number two is.
And then Sheethol.
Oh, and then Sheethol. Or do you want to go after, I don't care. Either Matt's before or after Sheethol, and then Wendy then me. Sorry.
Don't point at you.
Don't point at you? Well, are, after each candidate has answered their question, they're sitting out there, right?
Right. They're invited to.
Yeah, they're invited to, so, okay. So I hope they're not going to be confused.
Well, we're going to go in the same order each time, so hopefully they shouldn't be. We just have to.
We're going to do the same order each time, it's fine.
Yes. But we just have to remember, like, to write it down at the next one, because I only wrote it down on the first one.
So what is the order again?
Tim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle.
No, no, I'm sorry, the number, question.
Four, five, six, seven, eight. Matt is really going to be number nine, but he's asking 12. 10. And then we'll go back to Wendy, and then it's two, 12, two, 11.
All I know is I go after Jack.
Yeah. We're each going to go in the same order each time.
I'll just go after Jack. Okay, so is this accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Four, two, three, four. Then Matt's going to go here. Matt's going to go here with question 12.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, I have just a question. Hey, Jack, do you think that six and seven are really close in context? Should I change my question? I'm just rereading them together, and I think they're really close.
No, I think they're actually different, because one of them is, the first one is, is, is something that's wrong with the, with the, that you would want to fix, and the second one is what, what led you to want to serve on the board? Like, what are the positive aspects that made you want?
It could be the same thing.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's something wrong that makes you feel that they want to serve.
That's exactly what my fear is. I'm going to change my question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, my God, we finally got the order.
Now we got like cross out.
It'll be the same order, just a different question.
So we're taking. So I'm going to take that one out. Oh, wait, I took one. I meant to take.
Yeah. If you're not doing six, what do you do?
I'm reading. We, we.
Well, if we have a second option.
Nobody thought they were going to be interviewed till 6:30, so we'd have time.
I will be as.
All right.
So take Michelle off six. She's coming off six. Okay.
Hopefully, there's no bad questions, because these are our questions. I was thinking of 13. Is anybody opposed to 13?
I just.
Does anybody oppose to that question?
No, I think that'll tell us. It's a very wordy question.
It is a very wordy question. I'm ready.
My only concern is, like, will they have time to, like.
I like 14, actually.
Write that question down and all the parts of it, and then be able to answer it, you know? I like one, three, or five, personally.
And a five, we know. If they don't, well, if they don't know that answer, then that says something, I suppose.
That might be a good.
That's fine. I'll take five.
That might be a good question.
I'll take five. And that means that I'm still, like, in that running order, so that's fine.
So you're in.
You just went up one.
I just went up one.
You just moved up, just saying you're really not messing with everyone.
That's right. Sorry, guys.
13 is just very wordy.
I just think it's more worthwhile, because Jack's question is, I'm too slow to read Jack's question.
Okay, Frank.
Hey, Frank.
Okay, so we know the order. I'm going to explain that we hope, we expect to ask them eight questions, and they have 15 minutes, so obviously they have to keep answers appropriately, you know.
They can try.
I don't want to say brief, because I don't want them to think they only have a sentence, but.
He emphasized the 15 minutes part, whether we get through eight or not.
We're not going to do, like, one-minute answers, or?
I, I think, nobody's going to actually time them, so I think, I want to make sure I give them enough warning that they've only got 15 minutes, and maybe after the first two questions, if they take way too long, I'll just say.
You're going to have to speed up your answers.
Yeah. Consider answering a little more succinctly.
These questions are even harder to be on a, on a stage. My God. Right? So the next, so all the candidates are going to ask the same questions.
We are going to ask the same question in the same order to each candidate.
Good. Got it.
And then if anybody gets left out, it's me or Wendy. But don't hurry up and answer, because I'm on my. Does anybody else have any questions on the actual process for tonight? Good? Joanie, the first few people here?
Yes. So if you want to start, they're ready.
I would think we would like to start, right? Just in case they do go over their 15, because we don't have as much.
Yeah, we'll get behind schedule pretty quickly if we don't.
Oh, there was something that said if there's something that really needs clarified from a candidate, the president would ask for clarification. So I will keep my cell phone in front of me. If you have a specific question that you absolutely must get answered, you can text me, but they're supposed to answer the questions as we go. So they may leave things out, and that's, you know, good. Going to happen. But I just want to, you know, make sure that that possibility is out there for you guys. All right? We're all ready?
Ready?
Okay.
There's very little room for actually writing the answers down. I think I've used one of their, thank you, pages. I think I just got the thing down the mouth. Put them back. I just didn't think that part through. Judy brought her own, because she's prepared.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your application. We did receive it, and we, we do have the other papers that you submitted with your application. We have 15 minutes for your interview slot. We are hoping to ask eight questions, so just keep that timeframe in mind. We're hoping, you know, we will hear your answers to all eight questions as we go along, and each board member has a question, and we will start with Mr. Barrios.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Over the past 12, over the past 12 months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online?
Do I need to do my introduction or just answer this question?
We, well, we have, we have your, all your.
Resume, okay.
Yeah. So unless, unless you think there was something not on there that you want to clarify, we're good to go.
Perfect, okay.
I'm sorry, there's a second part to that. What is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Perfect, okay. So in the last one year, personally, like, I would have come here one or two times for the Board of Education meeting here, but good thing is I have subscribed for the local newspaper, like Patch, or Post Parsippany Focus, and all these magazines. Every day, I get a daily update about all the events, what's happening with the Board of Education or Parsippany Township. So I get to look at it, and if I want to see more, then I'll look at your video or some other information. So that's my usual practice, to know what's happening within our community. And then for your second question, I ran for Board of Education election back in 2023. Yes, I lost, but no regret for that. So I know how does the Board of Education work? Yes, they have no authority to take any decision. Superintendent is the one who runs the school. He does the daily operation of the schools, and then he comes back and gives the feedback about what's happening and all. As a board member, you have the authority to come up with the policy, regulations, how the school needs to be run. You have the control on the budget, you dictate what needs to be there, and you have those, how to approve the budgets, what's happening with respect to the rules, regulations. So that's where the board member's role is. But I personally think board member play as a common link between the school as well as the public or community.
So our next question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during 2025, 26? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
More than the challenge, first, I would like to highlight, we have a huge strength in terms of our school, especially the diversity of the school students, as well as the strong teachers community, I would call. And then from the challenge perspective, I know from last one and two years, the pilot program is the one which is causing major headache for everyone. So that could be a bigger challenge, I would consider. Second, the technology is booming a lot. We need to find how the technology can be used in terms of communication, or in terms of teaching, or in terms of how we can improve the current business process so that, like, okay, because of the inflation, because of the rising cost, we need to make sure that the budget is well-balanced.
Thank you.
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
I have worked 25 years in the IT industry. With my experience currently, how, what I do is I interact with the customers. I know their pain points, challenges. We help them in terms of operational efficiency, or it could be a continuous improvement, or it could be a process improvement. That's where I feel if I come into the board, I can play a role where I can, I mean, again, board member role is more of a team game, it's more of collaboration, communication, but as an individual, I feel that I can do my contribution in the, in that area. And also, I'm a project, project management professional, so I know that, okay, if any project needs to be executed, you can find how it needs to be run as a team player.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Judy.
Board members interact as a board, and as a member and/or chairperson of committees, what personal skills do you possess that could contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or, or chairperson of a board committee?
Maybe I need some more clarity on it, but maybe I'll just say what I can contribute. Okay?
Want to hear it again?
Yeah, oh, yeah, you can.
Board members interact as a board.
Judy, use your mic. What?
It's when does my voice not parry, because it's being recorded.
All right, now we're in stereo here. Okay. Board members interact as a board, and as a member and/or chairperson of a committee. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
Maybe from the, okay, from the public communication, if there is any board, I can look from that perspective, or it could be from the procurement side, I can help, or it could be from the communication, or it could be from the process improvement. If there is any board, I can help in that. Or it could be in terms of the auditing within the team. If there is anything, I can help from that area. So I do not know what are the different boards you have, but these are the, some of the areas where I can contribute.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Ina. Board members need to work with fellow board members and the superintendent in the spirit of mutual trust. What steps do you, would you start to take to building that trust?
Okay. First thing is communication. I personally feel that open communication is a key in terms of building trust. Second is transparency, so it's better to communicate openly with the group, as a team, share your thoughts, opinion. Of course, there will be difference of opinion as a team, that's completely fine, but see where you can meet as a team to achieve your goal, because as a board member, your goal could be to have an goal for your district. Your goal would be how, how the schools can be improved, how the students can have a better education. So as a team member, ensure that you communicate well with the board member, with the superintendent, and with respect to external board, so that there is more efficiency within the board and also for the schools. That's what I feel. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Wendy.
Can you please tell us why you're interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
Sure. Earlier, I had run, ran for 2023. Being in Parsippany for more than 15 years and 10 years, I would say volunteered for the Parsippany community. Just to highlight few of them, I mean, we are running a program called Teachers Appreciation Day. Every year, we invite almost like 10 to 15 teachers for this event, where we appreciate the teachers for the service, what they are doing to the community. Sometimes teachers become so emotional, they come back and say that, okay, by this program, what we have done, we have to contribute more to the school, more to the students, more to the community. When you look at this as a broader way, each teacher, if they contribute more, maybe 5%, 10% percent, there's a big contribution to the school, community, in that way, we have a better civic system. I personally, like, and apart from this, we do something called food drive. Every year, we do food drive during Christmas, Thanksgiving time, and this year, the goal has been set for $1 million across 35 states. So these are all the community service I'm doing, and I feel that the community and the school, they both go hand in hand. So I personally feel like when I'm doing the community service, I can also contribute to the school, where you can have a strategic planning, or some sort of advanced program, or some sort of flow, which can help the schools, it can help the future of the students. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Sheila.
Although there is an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings, and do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
Yes. Average, I'm thinking so far, my contribution could be 10 to 20 hours per month. As I work for Oracle Company, as a consultant, as a full-time professional, sometimes I travel to different places. When I say different places, within US, mostly towards the East Coast area, and our travel is always, you travel on Monday and then end up either Tuesday or Wednesday at the customer place, and then you come back by Wednesday evening. So with this schedule, I feel that I can contribute for other meetings also, but sometimes, again, what I think is, if I am traveling and still there is a meeting on a Thursday, I can attend through the Zoom call. Yeah.
All right, thank you. I think I'm up. Board of Education members are elected or selected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
Can you please repeat the question?
Yes. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
Okay. If I get elected as a board member, so you are representing yourself to the community. I would consider the stakeholders as students, teachers, parents, and the township taxpayers. As long as you are in touch with them, most of the stakeholders, and getting to know what's happening within the community, and have a transparency in terms of the communication, you feel, they get a picture that, yes, you are contributing to the community, in that way, they know that, okay, you're not playing an individual role, you're not paying for specific diversion sites, so they believe that, okay, you are doing it for the community.
Great, thank you. And Joanie did text me that I was supposed to ask for your opening statement, so if you have a statement, you are welcome, or if you, if you think you didn't get to answer something, you know, that we asked you.
I think I, I think, did I answer everyone's question?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you still have time?
Yeah, I think you, you have not used your whole 15 minutes yet.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Couple of minutes left.
Okay, so first of all, I personally want to sincerely want to thank you all for your commitment to the board, and because it's a voluntary job, you are doing a community service. Okay. So I feel that you are giving your time, you are doing your experience to the township, which will help a lot for the schools and also for the township. So that's a great thing, what you guys are doing. Personally, yes, my children, they are all from, I would call, proudly call, the product of Parsippany schools. They studied in Eastlake, Mount Eber, Brooklawn, Parsippany Hills High School. So I feel happy and proud that, okay, if I get elected, then my students, my kids studied here, then I get to contribute or give back to something to the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheetal, do you want to go after Wendy again, or do you want to?
Probably.
Okay.
No idea.
We got it, I just wanted to make sure we.
I was just feeling like there was one question that was kind of relevant when we were asking. Allison Reddick.
I need like thirty seconds, please. Sheetal, which one, I don't really want to change too many, but.
Was it mine?
This is seven and eight. That still sounds kind of similar. I went east, west, before you were asking.
I thought I was going after Matt, but then after I didn't.
That's all right. It was fine. Yes, then she's. I will try to remember to take the time.
I think her talks to the skills, though, as opposed to the interest. One talks to skills.
Right, the other question talks to interest, those are. I wrote down two different answers, so.
So I wrote down challenge? Wait, which one is it? Five, challenge, and seven was aspects of education that led you to serve. And then eight. That's okay, just keep it consistent. I can't do it now. Somebody just pointed out, you didn't make much. All I know is I go after Jack, that's all I know.
I'll look, okay, Mrs. Abraham.
Ask my mother.
That's right, because I always forget it, so. Hard for me actually remembering it, I'm not good.
Let me see. Everybody makes fun of my notes.
I know, why? You made really, you're taking really thorough notes.
Yes, yes, okay. I got most of it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for applying for the position. We have fifteen minutes, we are hoping to get through eight questions. But if you, and we do have, you know, all the information that you submitted. So we've all, you know, seen all that information. If you'd like, you know, to say anything before we start the questions, you are welcome.
I need to grab my glasses, I forgot.
Sure, I know that feeling.
Okay, I'm ready. So hello everyone, I'm Jaya. I'm here today to support and contribute towards the Board of Education's work that you guys have been doing. I'm a mother to two Pasipani kids. They're well-rounded, academically excellent kids, and that makes me eternally grateful to the school district for providing them the opportunities that they have received. I want these opportunities to be accessible to all the kids who go to Pasipani School District. My passion is to have future-ready generation, which is strong, which contributes towards building better society. And that is one of the reasons I'm running to be one of you guys. I have been an educator for past fifteen years. I have, I started as a teacher and evolved into a curriculum consultant with the top education companies right now. I specialize in AI literacy and data literacy. I'm ready to support the teachers and staff, building better infrastructure for our schools. I've been very involved in the local community. I have organized teacher appreciation events. I've been participating in the school district PTAs, organizing book fairs, organizing food drives, and so on. And I'm ready for any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Berias.
Good evening. Over the past twelve months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? What is, I'm sorry, there's one more second part to that. What is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Okay, so first of all, like, I have been very active when it comes to the video viewing of the, this, because at times, you know, the timing for that is not very vocal in my schedule. But yeah, I have actively watched it online. I have attended, I think, three of the board meetings. One of them was, I think, very recent, where the Pasipani School District kids who had excelled in one or the other of their achievements, they were awarded. So that was one of my favorite meetings in there. My understanding of a Board of Education member is that we support what the school district is going to perform like, like what is the curriculum going to be like, what is the budget going to be like, and how is it going to be, you know, impactful towards building better facilities in our schools and providing support for all the students?
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during 2025-26? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
So I think first of all, like, this comes from my kids also. I think the infrastructure is aging right now. We do need to provide our students with better opportunities, and it is not possible without the infrastructure. The other thing that I feel is like financially, we have to take more decisions that are based out of, the research are based out of data. So those are the two challenges that I think that we should work very collaboratively towards.
And then the follow-up question is, how would you contribute to those?
Okay, so my experience, as I said, has been into budgeting, has been into a lot of project management. So I bring those skills for your pursuit, and I think I can contribute using my skills on those.
Thank you very much.
Hi, are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Definitely. So my recent experience, first of all, was from my middle schooler who came to me. I have been a very big STEM promoter in my life, like STEM is everything. Take your math classes seriously, take your science classes seriously. But he brought a new perspective to me. Unfortunately, growing up as a student, I had never had an option of choosing music education. When he came up to me and he told me, like, you know, I want to pursue music. And I was like, I don't know anything about it, I don't think I can provide you with the support. But he was very strongly rooted into this, that my teachers are there, my school district is there, they're providing me with all the support. And when I was talking about the Board of Education meeting, he was one of the contributors to his music education. This is one thing that has changed my perspective completely. Like, you know, you have to be open, you have to discuss with your kids what are the opportunities that they want. I personally, if you ask me, I am a robotics coach for last two years. I'm a STEM person, I will always talk about STEM and robotics to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Board members interact as a board and as a member or a chairperson of committees. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a committee or as a member of a committee or a chairperson of a committee?
Okay, so as I said, that I have like extensive experience into technical education. I have over fifteen years of experience into the same field. Currently, like, I'm working with the ed tech company for Fortune 500 companies with curriculum specialization. Like, I specialize in curriculum consulting, which is more into technical education. So I think that is one thing, which is my, what do we say, my skills lie over there. But I think I'm very good at organizing a lot of things, organizing community events. I'm really good with interacting with community as well. I have arranged a lot of teacher appreciation events, as well as I have contributed to health programs as well. So I think those are skills would help me in whatever committees we have. And when you talk about collaboration, I have worked extensively with people with diverse opinions and bringing them back to the, like, you know, the main goal of the conversation, that has been my expertise too.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Board members need to work with fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps would you start to start building that trust?
So trust actually comes from both the parties listening to each other. So that is the first thing, like, listen out to the superintendent, listen out to the challenges that they have. And I think at times, that solves half of the problem. Like, if you're listening, if you're a good listener, you talk to them, you ask them about their challenges, they are going to come back with you with solutions. And that is going to be, like, you know, on, what do we call it? On a scale, you're going to solve your problem fifty percent at that time when you listen to the problem. And then you work towards, like, what solutions you have and go towards them. Did I answer your question properly?
Hello, you've kind of given some indication, but if you could kind of expand on, please tell you us why you're interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
So first of all, it's a sense of gratitude, as I said, that I have always believed that this is one unit, like the Board of Education, the school district, the superintendent, the teachers, the staff, everybody is one unit, and they have contributed immensely to my kids. So I definitely want to give back to the community. I want to be involved with the community, and that's the major reason I'm here. And the other thing why I am so, like, you know, interested in this position is also I want to support the kids in making them ready for future. Like, right now, we are talking about tests, we are talking about college readiness, but I think we should talk about workforce readiness, or we should talk about, like, overall development of kids, stronger kids, because that is what builds a stronger society.
Although there is an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? Do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
So currently, I don't have any commitments that would interfere with that, because along with my work that I do, it's forty hours per week. That's, that's what my work week looks like. But everything else, I think I can dedicate to the board, because I'm really, really interested in building this for our Pasipani students.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
So can you please repeat your question once again?
Sure. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
As I mentioned, like, I think that we all work as a unit. If one person is working only towards a specific objective, I don't think we can meet the common goals. And I believe everybody over here and in the school district is for one and one goal only, make the school district better for our students. So I think that's a common goal that we are going towards. We might have diverse perspectives, yes, that's pretty common, that to have a diverse perspective on something, but the goal is common. So just focus on the goal that is there.
Thank you. Okay, I believe six, seven, eight, that was all eight of our questions. We got them through, right? Is there anything else that we, that you didn't get through that you wanted to make sure to tell us?
I think I covered everything that I wanted to.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. I think I'm scanning everybody into answering fast.
It's okay, it's not.
I'm giving him a chance of the end.
Yeah, a little closer to the microphone.
Okay.
You too. Oh damn.
It's never been a problem that my voice doesn't carry, ever.
Has to reach the recording.
Yes.
I was just following.
Can you hear me on the playground?
I mean, I was just following, Jody was behind you, like going.
I get it all the time, nobody could ever hear me.
And, oh my God, you?
Yeah, good lord.
No way.
Kidding.
Hello, everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
Hope you guys, hope you guys had a good day so far.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We do have, you know, all the information that you sent ahead of time, and we have been through that. We have fifteen minutes to, for this interview. We have eight questions that we would like to ask. So, you know, obviously, we hope to get through all eight in that time. If there is something, you know, you'd like to start off with, that's fine, or we can start with the questions.
Definitely. I just want to give a little introduction about me and myself and my family, definitely. So I'll start with my name, I'm Rupendra Simakurti. Am I audible?
Just pull it closer to you.
Okay, no? Okay, I'll start again. So my name is Rupendra Simakurti, and I live in Morris Plains. I'm an IT program manager, and I come from IT background, as you are aware. You saw my resume as well. I'm happily married with two kids. My eldest son is going to be in a junior in college next year, I mean, this fall. And my younger son is going to be a freshman in high school this fall. So both of them are in the same school district, and I'm really happy that I'm getting this opportunity to talk to you and provide my inputs to be on the board, if selected, okay? And I just want to ensure that you're aware, my management skills and the collaboration skills, which I have learned and earned over time, I will be definitely using them to provide opportunities and collaborate with all the team members and ensure that we are bringing in some fiscal responsibility into the system. I know, there is responsibility, but a bit more clarity on what we are trying to do and how we want to do things. And I want to definitely use my experience there, as well as ensuring that a happy student community and teacher community is going to be providing them the equitable opportunity that they need to be successful and also create a strong community. I know Pasipani has been trying their best, and that's one of the reasons I said I wanted to be in Pasipani when I moved from Boston. So I really love this place, and I'm really happy to work with you all if I'm provided an opportunity.
Great, thank you. Mr. Berias.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a two-parter. Over the past twelve months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? What is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Okay, to be very frank, I have not attended or viewed any Board of Education meetings online. But as a board member, I am going to be responsible basically in framing the policies that are needed for providing all the facilities needed for the students, teachers, and their families in, for educational purposes. So it's a highly responsible position, which will really give an insight and provide a lot of input to the team in general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
Definitely. I have been following news pretty closely, and with the new administration coming in, there is definitely a lot of changes to the educational policy and the support we are going to be receiving from the federal system. And I was reviewing the financial charts for our school district for the past three years. And I see there's definitely a lot of decrease in the amount that's being provided by the federal and state as well. So definitely, I want to work with you all, understand what are the possibilities where we can bring some, I mean, some kind of policies where we can reduce, depending on the. where we can reduce depending on the amount of funds we are receiving from every, I mean, all the places and ensure that we are happily able to spend it for the required purposes and not for everything, but specifically prioritizing our requirements and spending our dollars there. That's how I look at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Definitely, Jack, good evening to you as well. I've been, I've been, I'm a parent, but I'm also an educator myself. Even though I work in IT, I also teach our language to kids over the weekends. There is an organization with whom I have been working and I really ensured my kids know my language from where I am, which part, the part of India where I am from, we speak a specific language. I just want to make sure the kids are learning that language. At the same time, I also ensure that they learn the language that is highly spoken here, other than English, which is Spanish. And I have a very good insight into what is, what it helps, how it helps the kids, not just in terms of talking, but also on their mental development. Different languages help them, I'm, I can speak four languages and write four languages. So that's definitely one of the reasons I wanted to come in and enforce, not enforce, but at least provide inputs to people and the teachers that, yes, this is important and we need to ensure that students receive all-round development, rather than being specific to some specific subjects or their interests.
Okay, thank you.
Just closing out. Board members interact as a board and as a member and/or chairperson of a committee. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
It's a very good, interesting question, Julie. Yes, as a board member, my background in management. I've been in the IT industry, as I mentioned, for the past twenty-five years and my background managing projects, delivering projects, given, has given me the skills to identify, recognize, I mean, identify and also ensure that I am taking the right steps to achieve the goals. So as, as a board member, my goal is to ensure every student receives the support and the education they need to be successful. And also happy, because I have seen students not being happy even though they have completed their classes or they move to next grades. I want the students to be happy, that they are doing something and they are learning something good for them and they are able to show that.
Thank you.
Yep? Yeah.
So, so board members need to work with their fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps do you, will you take to build that trust?
Thanks for the question, Matthew, it's, it's really a twister, I would say. I mean, when you are given an opportunity to become a board member, first and foremost thing is I would like to understand what is that? The board, the goals of the board, number one, and ensure that I express my opinions to the board and we all talk together because the board is not being constituted newly, it's, it's a board that is already there and I'm going to be a new member if I'm given the opportunity. But I would like to get, understand the policies, procedures being followed and ensure that I am on the same path as the entire board as it is. But if there are any suggestions I would want to make to improve the process, I would definitely provide my inputs and take the process forward. That's how I would talk, collaborate, and ensure we are achieving success.
Thank you. Can you please tell us why you're interested in being a board member?
Yeah, sure, Wendy. All my life, I had been, I'd been teaching kids, I mean, even when I was in college, I used to teach kids. I used to give them personal tutusions to make sure they are learning, they are able to, they are able to provide the outcomes they need to provide. And this is an opportunity where I can use that kind of experience, I'm not saying that experience, but that kind of experience at a higher level and ensure that we are framing the rules, policies that can help all the kids. Basically, it should be a equitable opportunity for all the kids, not specific kids or not specific teams, but all the kids. And this is the place where we can ensure that is being framed and followed. So that's one reason, one of the main reasons I wanted to be taking this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Although there is an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? Do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
Before responding to that question, can I ask you what times of the day these meetings are conducted? Is it during the daytimes or evening, what times do the day?
They're evening, they're, I think our general meetings are six o'clock. We have our executive sessions that run around five-thirty generally.
Okay.
Six, six-thirty is when we have our public meeting.
Okay.
And our committee meetings also happen to run past, after five, five-thirty.
So generally, all the meetings are conducted or starts around five-thirty? And you said two meetings per month, right?
There are two board meetings per month and several committee meetings during the month and other events as they come up.
Yeah, so on a monthly basis, I can, I can provide at least fifteen to twenty hours in total. I mean, depending on the requirements and depending on how much time I need to spend because just not attending the meetings, but I also need to prepare for the meetings, right? So I would say fifteen to twenty hours is how I'm looking at it at this point. But I need to get a little bit deeper into the process and understand what exactly is the timeframe I need. But yeah, fifteen to twenty hours seems very reasonable.
And the second part of the question was, do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
If it is in the evening after five-thirty, I should be good because my, all my work meetings will complete, work will complete around 5:00 PM, so I should be good. Most of the time I work from home, so I should be good. Thank you.
All right, I think that leaves me and I'm pretty sure you've already answered this, but I'll ask it to, in case you want to elaborate. Board mem, Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile that, this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
Can you reiterate the last part of the question?
Yes, how do you reconcile the represent all students with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
Definitely, the board members do not, I mean, as I was expressing, a happy student community is a happy system itself. They are going to be the future and they are going to build a strong community. So the board members are responsible for each and every student. We cannot, we cannot have a part, we cannot identify a specific group. We can identify a specific group to improve them, but not to really provide the process, I mean, provide anything that they need, that other kids should not be provided. So we should not be having that kind of an approach. The approach should be equal opportunity and equal work to all the kids as they need it.
Thank you, yeah. So I said, I thought you'd pretty much answered that, but that's okay. All right. Five, six, seven, eight, that was all of our questions. We have our fifteen minutes. Thank you very much for coming in and applying for the position.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was fourteen minutes, so bang, perfect.
Yes, see that? Made a big difference.
Yeah, him using the mic was better.
Yes.
I didn't realize they weren't.
Yeah.
See, it's not just.
Yeah, sheathos isn't.
Is not working at all.
Just want me to move this one over since I'm not using mine? If you're not using.
Hello, hello, hello.
Well, you could probably hear me in Bermuda. I was, I don't care.
Oh, this was the message.
Oh, okay.
Well, this is yours.
They're flying. Ten minutes ahead. Nice. It's good. Yeah. You might actually hear what you're supposed to hear. Did we get all the questions right?
Hi, I mean, we need to help with the weather, like subsidence.
No tornadoes?
No. I was, um, I was like sitting in my living room earlier and my son was home because camp was like, he's in Camden, Moorestown. But they were like, come pick him up because he's at the Y. And I was like, okay. And we're sitting there and all of a sudden we hear like lightning strike and it hit a tree on our, on our block. And I look out the window and I just see the tree go. And so it's like blocking the whole street, so I'm like, we should probably call nine-one-one and just have him come check it out. So I got JCPN all up and down the block right now and it's been, it was an eventful rain, but I'm like, all right, as long as it don't get seven inches. And I'm sorry, I'm just jumping right in. Hi, sorry. I'm Erica Nakulak, nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, thank you for coming in. We do have fifteen minutes for this interview. We have eight questions that we would like to get through in those fifteen minutes. We do have all the printouts of everything you handed us.
Awesome.
But if you'd like to make, you know, a statement before we start asking you, you are welcome to.
Sure, so I'll be brief since I already took some time. So my name is Erica Nakulak, as I indicated, I've been a resident of the town since 2018. My son started in Parsipni Public, Public Schools in 2022. My daughter starts kindergarten in the fall. Like, why now, right? Like, I think that, that's kind of an important question, like, why decide for the board now? And I think part of it is capacity, right? So I've spent the last several years with my daughter, just still having a lot more needs prior to entering public school. I was getting my doctorate at the time and just a lot of different things happening. And then I saw this opportunity come up and I said, you know what, this is a great next step, right? I'm done with school, my daughter's going to be in school. I would love to be a part of the system that's shaping their education. So, so let me bring my passion, knowledge, those types of things to this governing body. Not that I'm saying I'm not here to learn because there's a lot to learn as well, but I think I have a unique perspective that could complement the perspectives currently on the board. And I'll leave it at that.
Good evening. This is a two-part question. Over the past twelve months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? And what is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Sure. I've only attended, I think, one in person. I've seen at least three or four online. Sometimes I don't catch them live, I, I get the, the post view later. So that, that's the first part. The second part, what's my understanding, right? So it's the governing body that works in consultation with the, or maybe not consult, it's the governing body that helps kind of guide and make the decisions that impact the schools within the district, right? So you're, you know, managing the budget, high-level personnel things, working directly with the superintendent to ensure that the strategic vision and plan are kind of moving along as planned and desired. I think there's a lot, right? I think you're, you're also the face of the district to many people. I think that there is a, a relationship and a liaising with parents that's involved in that. You know, I think that there are things that can come up. I think you have to be ears everywhere as well because I think sometimes things don't make it as far as the room. So there's some of those unofficial pieces that I think are part of it. Yeah, that's my overarching understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi.
What do you see as a greatest challenge facing the Board of Education in the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
Okay. The greatest challenge facing the board? I think, I think there's a, oh, there, there's a new superintendent coming in and I think that there's going to be some managing of that relationship. It's a, it's also an October, a planned October change. I think that brings about unique challenges. I think considering how that's going to flow into the district and looking at how we're continuing to maintain along the pace that we've been on and not shifting course too dramatically at the beginning with a new person. I think that that's a, that could be a unique challenge, opportunity that's facing the board this year. You know, I'll just leave it there, yeah, okay, sorry. I'm a little nervous. I'm trying not to be.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Any specific aspects of edu, I mean, yeah, I, so I, I bring, yes, I'm excited because I have an education background, right? And I, and I think that the district is doing a lot of great things and there's a lot of things happening and I, I love the diversity that we have in our district and I think that that puts us, uniquely positions us to help prepare our students for the diverse world that they're entering into. And so I think, can you repeat the first part of the question again?
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Yeah, and so I, I think I want to make sure that we maintain some of these core values that are, that are strong and, and that are important to the diverse members of our community and making sure that we're holding on to them. And so the desire to want to serve comes from, sometimes I think we have to ask yourselves, like, if not me, then who? And so when I saw the opportunity to do it, I said, I, I'm an able, a person who can come in and do it. I think I understand issues facing public education. I think I am a quick study of, you know, learning what's going on and taking the opportunity to sit back, reflect, and kind of try to understand how can we best serve our community, given the strengths, challenges, limitations of the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members interact as a board and as a member and/or chairperson of a committee, okay? What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
So my professional experience right now, I do work with schools across northern New Jersey, helping them develop, plan, and implement strategic plans for school improvement. So that's an area of expertise. And so in part of doing that, there's a lot of liaising between school administrators, teachers, school districts, and kind of navigating that relationship and that piece. I think there's then also a lot of this external navigation of looking at like partnerships that schools can foster and develop. So this piece around cultivating relationships, I think that's a, that's a strength that I bring. I'm also relatively familiar with a lot of New Jersey education codes through having gone through this process, which I, I don't think some people are as familiar, which is fine. I also know how to read the code, which again, can sometimes be a challenge. You know, I've worked with budgets with schools and helping them figure out how to use various funds. There's a lot of nuance to funding and I think there's a lot of limitations to certain types of funding that people just aren't aware of. They're like, why can't we just buy the things that we need to buy? It's not always that easy, unfortunately. So I think that those are kind of some areas. I think I understand a lot of the backend logistics. There's a lot of pieces around like data-driven decision-making, I think that that's a big piece. You know, even just looking at the New Jersey Performance Report, looking at it, diving into it and seeing, what is this data telling us and where do we go from here, right? So if you looked at our districts from the twenty-three, twenty-four. So if you looked at, um, our districts from the 23-24 data, which was released in April, it's the most recent one, um, we are, um, somewhat flat in our growth. Um, and so I think that that tells a story, right? We have high growth in elementary school and math, everything else is somewhat typical. Um, and our growth is, is somewhat stagnated, even our math data has dropped from when it initially peaked in terms of performance in 2022. So I think that we are performing above the state, but I think that there's still a place for growth, which doesn't entirely, I realize I'm getting a little bit tangential and I'm sorry, but I think just understanding those nuances and being able to get into it is, is also a piece that I could bring to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thanks.
So, so board members need to work with their fellow board members?
Yep.
And the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps would you take to start building that trust?
Yeah, well, I like to think we have two ears and one mouth for a reason, right? So even though I'm doing a lot of talking right now, I think that there's a lot of value in listening. Um, obviously, coming in, I would be, uh, the most green person in the room. Um, and so even though I have, have iterated several times that I think I bring this unique perspective because I understand the education system, um, I think it's important to, uh, be humbled by the knowledge that we bring to the table. And so I think, you know, managing those relationships is one of the most important pieces. I mean, each of you has, has been here for a period of time, um, some of you longer than others. Um, you have an expertise specifically with this district, with these challenges. Um, and I think that there's a lot that I have to learn from that as well.
Thank you. Uh, can you please tell us why you are interested in being a board member?
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, I hit on some of this before, um, but sometimes even when things aren't going the way we planned, um, it can be really easy for people to complain, but not actually want to do anything about, um, their complaining, right? Um, which it's, i- if you don't have a, a solution, then, um, where do we go from here? So I think, I say that not to say I'm, I want to complain, right? But I say that to say, when, when challenges arise, um, how better to move things in the right direction than to be a part of the group that's kind of trying to do that? Um, also, um, both my kids are here and I, and I want to model for them what it means for active civic engagement, for being a part of, you know, the solution, for being willing to take a voice and take a stand and advocate for the things that you think are important within your educational system. Thanks. Hi.
Although there's an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? And do you have any commitments that interfere with board meetings?
Do I have any, no, I don't have any commitments that interfere beyond like the, my kids are in activities, right? So beyond that, which, you know, I have a, an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. So they're in certain, my son's in Taekwondo, my daughter's in dance and she'll be starting soccer. So there's that piece. I mean, other than that, um, like I said, I just finished school and that was a huge commitment, so I have all that time free now. Um, so if I could piggyback and ask before I answer, like randomly with a number, what's the average time that a board member spends outside of your, because I know board meetings can run long. So if you take board meetings out of the ta- out of the equation for a minute, how long would you say you average the, the time commitment that you give in a given month?
Okay. Um, I can tell you, all of us are on several committees and they meet, um, at least several times. Some of them are several times a year, some, some are more, much more frequently, um, depending on the committee. So that is something to consider as well. The board meetings, like I said, are two times a month, but we also have the executive sessions right before that.
Yep.
Um, they do, they, you know, they vary in length as to, depending on what the agenda is. Um, and then there are other things that we participate in as we can, uh, throughout the year, whether it be, uh, school activities or, um, just things that we want to, that we get invited to or, um, such as, uh, maybe even like tour the schools and things like that. But tha- that might be the only thing that might be more during the daytime. Most of it is in the evening after 5:30, uh, and onward. So, uh, just to give you an idea of, you know, if we are on three to four committees each, uh, that would require you to attend those committee meetings. Like I said before, they're not always, they're not every month.
Okay.
Some are spread out, depending on the committee. Um, and then the, we have two board meetings a month, executive sessions as well. And that also changes depending on the summer and, uh, whatnot, so.
That makes sense. Well, I would say I'm here because I want to do it, so I would make it a, I would make it a priority, right? So I, I think that's the best way I can answer it. I don't want to give you a random number and then you're like, 12 hours, doesn't make any sense because some months it's 27 hours and some months it's eight. Um, and so I, I think, um, if you guys decide that I'm the right choice for this committee and for this district and if I am in agreement with you then, then I'm going to make the time commitment to do it with, um, with intentionality. And I, and I think that that's what's most important over, over giving you a random number. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constitu- constituencies, communities, or groups?
Can you just repeat that again for me?
Yep. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
So I, I think you said it by itself in the beginning, right? So you're, you're here to represent everyone's issues, not just one group's. And so I think it's, I think that there's a duality. It doesn't have to be this and/or, it can be both and. Um, and so I, I think that that's part of it, right? Is that always easy? No. And do you get sucked in? And, and I think sometimes I can imagine it can be a challenge with reconciling, um, what could be your own personal hopes for things and then re- managing that with the realistic expectations of, of budget or larger, uh, community interest and things like that. So I think that there's a lot of, uh, reconciliation, if you will, that probably goes into this, um, in and of itself. And so I think part of that is being transparent with yourself and being honest about it. Um, I think it's, it's having conversations with your, with your trusted colleagues in this. And then I think it's also knowing that like ultimately the decisions that the board makes affect the, what is it, like 8,000 kids roughly that are in the district? And so we have to think, and, and more coming every year, right? And so I think we have to think about, um, how we're making the decisions that best interest them. Um, but then also being fiscally, financially responsible as well, right? So we're not trying to, um, go into, into deficits over things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that was all eight of our questions and we made it in. Thank you very much for coming out and applying for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not me either.
Who does?
Not a fan.
Today is the last day of the Saturday of summer. Tomorrow starts the Sunday of summer. Meaning like July always feels like a Saturday. And August always feels like a Sunday.
Oh, I gotcha.
Yeah. Staring in the face.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience. My 50 tons of career.
Hello. Okay. Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, we have fifteen minutes for our interview tonight and we are hoping to get through eight questions. We do have the, you know, all the information that you sent ahead of time. And if you'd like to make an opening statement, you're welcome to, otherwise we will get right to the questions.
Okay, I do. I'll try and be brief. Okay. Um, good evening, my name is, uh, Suzie Golderer. Thank you so much for the opportunity of being here tonight. Um, I, at, for education, I have a degree in, um, a bachelor's in psychology with a specialization industrial organizational psychology from Fairleigh Dickinson. Um, I felt it was important to come here tonight and ask, um, for the opportunity to be considered, to fill the vacancy that Mr. Toffo left upon his resignation. The district is going through a lot of changes and will be going through many more in the next two to six years. We need to have people who are not afraid to speak up and take action when it is needed. We need to make sure we do our research and find the most favorable outcomes for the space and financial situations we are encountering. No one on this board or the administration have ever had the experience of such a large expansion project that we are currently being forced to undergo. Why is it happening is no longer in question as, as to how to handle the repercussions of the overdevelopment the town is, of Parsippany is facing. The district will face other distractions that will take away from what we are here to do, which is educate the children of Parsippany. But as long as the board is united and focused, I think all of this can be something positive for the school district. That is why I am asking for the board to please consider me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this question, this has two parts. Over the past twelve months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? And what is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Okay, well, I was out of the country for six months and so I, I mean, prior to leaving, I attended all my meetings. Um, so I'm going to say six, seven. Okay, and the role of a board member is that we are to give the superintendent the support to administer the district. And, um, we're basically the trustees for the, for the people and the, the community of Parsippany in that we're making sure that everything is being handled accordingly, properly, according to the, um, state regulations and laws and, um, that we provide an equal education to all the children of Parsippany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you see as a greatest challenge facing the Board of Education in the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
Um, as I said in my opening statement, we're going, it, it's going to be very difficult to meet, um, the budget, um, the budget needs of the district. And I believe that what needs to happen is we have to think out of the box. We have to not look at things the way that they have been done all the time and, and not be afraid of trying something different and new because if we're ever going to do it, it's going to have to be done now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Suzie.
Hi.
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Any specific?
Aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
Um, the most important to me is, I hold very dear, the, um, elementary education. I think it is the, it's the foundation. It's the most important part of a child's education because that's where you learn to read, to write. Um, that's where you encounter new friendships. That's where, um, that e- uh, it's the emotional part of it and, and little, and kids are like sponges. You know, they just want to absorb and they just want to please people and they want to be happy. And you, you know, i- it's the best time for me. It's, it's the elementary education because to see the, the faces and, and when children get to their next level, it's, um, it's very rewarding.
Thank you.
Board members interact as a board and as a member and/or chairperson of committees.
Can, yeah, yes, thank you.
What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
Okay, well, I, I do have a, um, I have over forty years of business experience. I have, um, I actually have worked in every department you could possibly think of. I've worked in customer service, I've worked in, um, order entry, accounts receivable, accounts payable. I've worked as human resource director. I've worked in manufacturing, printing, IT, healthcare. So what that has given me, um, over the forty years is that experience of not looking at things narrowly and being able to, to see what things are done across, um, you know, a- a- across the different industries and the things that happen the same way in every industry. So it's just given me a, a good outlook to be able to make better decisions.
Okay.
So board members need to work with their fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps will, will you take to start building that trust?
Okay. Um, I have said before that the Board of Education is an entity in itself that when board members are sitting in the dais, when board members take the oath, you know, its loyalty to the group of nine people that, that is important. And outside, people really should not have, um, things to say about what's happening in the district itself. Um, that's why they, you know, any individual can run and if they want their opinion or their voice heard. Um, but it's important to be able to, to be honest with each other, to be able to give your opinion and be respected for. and be respected for it even though, you know, we, we don't agree. And the same thing goes, of course, with the superintendent is to be honest. You know, and, and sometimes honesty hurts, but that's why we're all adults and we should be able to, we should be able to communicate. You know, we ask that of all the kids in the district, we should have it ourselves.
Is that ringing?
Hi Suzie.
Hi.
Can you please tell us why you're interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
Okay, well, as I said before, I, you know, a lot of people say, well, you know what? I, I resigned or I'm not running again because I feel I'm done. And I really, to a point, felt that way and I'm like, you know, I've been on the board for, you know, what, thirteen years? And all my children have gone to the school district, my children, my grandchildren are going through it. And I just feel, but in the light of what we're going through, it's insane to wanna be, to, to actually be offering myself for this. It's a huge headache what everyone is gonna have to face. And, but I'd like to be a part of that because at the same time, I think it's an awesome opportunity to be able to, one, continue the same direction that Parsippany has always had in values in education, but at the same time, maybe create a new, a new way of doing things, which I find exciting.
Hi Suzie.
Hi.
Although there's an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? And do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
No, and, I mean, I don't even, you know, like, I, I can't think that I would ever change anything that I've done in the past and I've always been here.
All right, it's my turn. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
How, could you say that last part again, please?
Yep. How do you reconcile the fact of representing all students with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
I, I mean, everybody has their, you know, quirks and agendas and I just feel that it's important that once you enter, you know, once you enter the doors of this building, that you remember that, you know, it's, it's one, you know, it's a whole. It's not individual groups or individual people. And as I said before, I, I believe strongly in the core values that the Board of Education members have to have of equal education for all. And that, you know, I mean, there's no other way of looking at it, from me at least.
All right, thank you. That was all of our questions.
Okay.
And we made it in our fifteen minutes, so thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
It was just a sample, you know, nothing.
Did you turn it off?
We did this before to make sure. But we changed it now.
Now it's real?
Maybe get Brian to help you out.
Someone else is ringing, I was like, double check.
I'm just leaving it like this. Is it ringing?
Look at this, who the hell is gonna see my name, look at this.
Is it really ringing? You said it wasn't gonna ring.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you.
Get yourself settled, you're good.
Yep.
All right, thank you for coming in tonight. We have fifteen minutes for this interview. We are hoping to get through eight questions during those fifteen minutes.
Okay.
We do have the information that you sent in, so we have that and we've been through that. But if you'd like to, you know, make an opening statement, you are welcome to, or we can start with the questions.
Yeah, let's just jump in.
Mr. Barrios?
Good evening.
Hi.
My question has two parts. Over the past twelve months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? And what is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Okay. I've never really counted how many meetings I've attended. I know I come whenever I can. Just something of interest to me, budget, I like to try to get to the budget. The curriculum meetings, I like to try to at least have my thumb on the pulse somewhat of what's going on. I listen on YouTube whenever I can, I pop in my earbuds while I'm doing my housework or driving, very intently during the pilot. I would say in the past year, maybe eight total. I, I don't wanna give the wrong information, but, I mean, I know I've seen all of you many times. A role of board member, I mean, as far as I understand, you guys create policies for the school district and ensure that they run effectively and hire the superintendent. Which was a task, I'm sure. Those are big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, Michelle.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help to meet that challenge?
Okay. To me, in my experience, the biggest challenge we're facing is definitely monetary. Meeting budgets instead of cutting budgets and the pilot, how to work around all these new students that are definitely headed our way in the future. For this year alone, I would think that the best way to, like, approach that is to start thinking outside of the box. Possibly using the benefit of the fourteen PTAs that we have in town because I know for my school alone, we have raised more money than we've ever raised in the past because we took a new approach and we're like, we need to hit this head on and we need to hit the ground running and keep going. And right now, two years ago when I started, we had thirty-five hundred dollars in our account to start the year. This year I have thirty-five thousand dollars in my account to start the year. I have engaged the parents that volunteer with me and tried to explain to them why it's good for us to reinvest that money back into the school and make it better for our students. And I think that that could be an untapped potential to help meet those monetary issues that every town is facing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
First and foremost would be my children. They are both in elementary school. They are in the same elementary school that I attended. So having grown up here, the town is very near and dear to me and the schools I adore. In education as a whole, I think that Parsippany has an excellent education system. We have always been a leader in all the things that we've done. I mean, I remember being in the top ten in the state when I was back in PHS. So it's, to me, it's a little more like a piece of my heart and trying to give back to the community and being able to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi Judy.
Okay, board members interact as a board and as a member or a chairperson of committees. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
Okay, good question. I think as a whole, I am very open-minded. I not just hear what people are saying, but I truly listen to what people are saying and I try to see any topic from all sides because you have to compromise. We all know we have different point of views, we all have different things that are important to us, so there's definitely compromise. And I'm very respectful. You have to respect that every person's opinion matters just as much as your own. Chairperson of a committee, I mean, ideally, I would say that I would be the perfect candidate to be chairperson of the PTA liaison, or that's not really a committee. I would be perfect to be the PTA liaison. I have an excellent relationship with the sitting presidents and the new ones. We have a group chat, we talk all the time, we're very open, we support each other, help each other. And I kinda feel like that would be the same environment I would like to participate in on the board.
Thank you.
Over here, hi.
Oh, hi. I was wishing.
So board members need to work with their fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps do you start to, start building that trust?
Okay, building trust, well, first of all, I say exactly what I mean. If I don't mean it, I don't say it. So right off the bat, you get truth and honesty from me, sometimes a little too much, not gonna lie. Sometimes I just say it and people don't like to hear it, but that's what we have to do. I think I had an excellent relationship with Dr. Sutter. I was very upfront with him, open, candid. And I had that same relationship with my principal, who will be dearly missed. I think I'm building that relationship right off the bat with our new principal. I have an excellent relationship with our teachers. So, I mean, to build trust, you have to start by giving it and being honest. And that's just me, I don't believe in lying at all. Terrible politician, no, just kidding.
And can you please tell us why you're interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
Well, I always kind of had it in the back of my mind. Ideally, I was thinking like, oh, when my kids are a little older, that would be a good thing for me to do. After the past two years that I served as PTA president, and I'm still PTA president moving forward right now, I found that I really enjoyed empowering the families at my school and giving them acknowledgement for their well-doings. So I was like, you know what, maybe this is the time for me. I happened to be here at that meeting totally randomly when Mr. Chaffo resigned, was not expecting it. I think my jaw hit the floor. I just was like, I have nothing today, there's a board meeting, I'm gonna go listen. And it was almost like a sign, like now's the time, just do it. So I'm doing it now. I think I could be a very valuable asset representing elementary school families on the east side of Parsippany, which, please, thank you for all you have done, but there isn't one of you here. Or am I mistaken? I don't think there is one sitting person here that has an elementary student on the east side currently. And I think it needs to be done.
Sorry. Although there's an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? And do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
Okay, well, hours, I mean, honestly, do we have a, do any of us have hours per month just lying around? No, we all, we all are bombarded with tons of things to do. When something's important, you make time. When I took over PTA, I made time. I attend every single event at my school that I am allowed to enter the building for. I don't care if my children aren't in it, I am at the fourth grade concert, I am at the first grade play. I didn't even have kids in those grades. It's just, you do what you're called upon to do. So I don't, hours, however many hours I need, I'll make them happen. I'm very lucky to be a stay-at-home mom, so I can make the time when I need to make the time. I can juggle my schedule. I don't have like, oh, I got stuck in traffic coming home from work or I had to go away on a business trip. That's not my life. Yes, would my kid be sick? Possibly, we've all been there. Gentlemen, usually your wives, the kids, for some reason, they want mommies when they're sick. I don't, it's a thing, I don't know. But I think, yeah, I would find a way to make the time if I make a commitment. And that was actually the very first thing I did before I considered filling out that, writing that letter and sending it in, was I contacted the state PTA office and asked if there would be any conflict of interest, being the sitting president, because there was no way I was going to abandon my commitment that I made to Rockaway Meadow. And they did tell me that it is not a conflict, it is actually strongly encouraged. So I was like, okay, thank you for the green light, here I go.
All right. It's my turn. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
I think that those people are incorrect. This is not a political venue. I think everyone working here should be solely focused on the benefit of the children. I know that's what I do in the PTA. Everything that I come up with, everything that I think of, I am looking at how it's going to better every single student in the building. We have the most diverse student body that I have ever thought possible. We have this tiny little student body of two-hundred-and-fifty students. They represent nineteen countries, they speak fourteen languages. We commissioned an artist last year to paint a thirty-foot mural inside the school focused on diversity and kindness. Like, it's very important to me that people understand that this isn't a political venue. This is for children.
Thank you. All right, I believe that was our eight questions and we got them in. Thank you very much for applying for the position.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's not mine. Oh, that's not mine.
We all good? Is that where you're gonna be?
Yeah, it said it's 7:48. He asked, let's not ask.
Forgot to give her the high song.
For 7:48. It just, it was just talking. It said 7:48 here. Do you have a 7:48?
I don't know. I didn't ask what time it was.
They told you.
I do not know. I'm gonna put my watch in my pocket for next. Put it away. Just getting out of hand.
I think that I'll take it.
My watch told me what time it was.
That's what it was, 7:48 here.
Okay, I'm taking off.
You are a mess, lady.
I have nothing now. I stripped down to the bare.
No, we're good, sorry.
Oh, I forgot about the others. Oh, gosh.
So, we have this one and one more, right?
Yep.
Yes?
Got it. We got this.
It's just like, it's too much. It's a big, it's a big room.
Is that all the way down?
No, it's too far.
So funny. There's something that's 7:48. I don't know why I did that. It's not set on an alarm. Oh, it's gone.
Yeah, Dr. Rink, you and I have already all my. It's.
I'm the other.
I thought we had. Close the mic.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We have 15 minutes for this interview. We have eight questions that we'd like to get through.
Okay.
We do have the information that you, you know, sent in ahead of time, so we have been through that. But if you would like, you know, to make an opening statement, you could do that? Or we can start with questions?
I just wanna say hello and that I'm happy to be here. As a lot of you know, I ran for a board seat a couple of years ago. I've been, I lived in Parsippany all my life. I taught 17 years here at elementary, at Lake Hurwata Elementary School. So, I feel like I know the town very well. I have two daughters, one attending Central, one attending the high school. So, I have a very vested interest here. I left a few years ago. I'm now in the business world. So, I do HR and internal finance and payroll for a small business. We have about 27 employees. So, like I said in my letter, I feel like I can bring a balanced viewpoint to the Board of Education, knowing education very well for many years and now knowing the business world as well. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My question has two parts. Over the past 12 months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? What is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Okay, good question. I've probably attended three or four and I've viewed many of them online. I always make it a point to view the bulletins as well and their readings and any addendums. I know a board member looks at mixed policy for the district. I know they don't run the school district per se. I know they help with, they obviously appoint the superintendent, but we report the policy to the public. We review rules and regulations and ensure the district is in compliance among those lines. You know, we don't set curriculum and things like that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help to meet that challenge?
I think a big challenge will be population growth in our town. I know that's a big issue with all the buildings. I know the board has been on the forefront in trying to help mitigate as best that they can with all of the building going on. I think we can be out in the community, out in the schools to really see for ourselves what is happening at each classroom level and then go from there with tackling those challenges of population growth head-on.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
That's a loaded question as coming from an education background. I think, I think public education is paramount in our society. I think we have to invest in students from the ground up and to educate them as best that we can. So, I mean, specifically, not sure if there's one specific reason, but again, looking at the kids that we have in our town, helping them be the best versions of citizens, best educated they can is what I would say.
Okay, thank you.
I could go more into depth than all the aspects, but I won't, I won't bore you.
Hi. Board members interact as a board and as a member and/or chairperson of a committee. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
Thanks Judy. I believe I am very logical. I'm grounded in facts. I like to see reason with everything. So, regardless of my opinion, I will look at the policies in place. I'll look at the facts in front of me and bring a balanced approach to looking at pros and cons. I'm known to be very level-headed. I'm known in on the committees that I've served on, even as an elementary school teacher. Like, I bring, I bring a level of logic to whatever I do.
Thank you.
Hi. So, board members need to work with their fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust. What steps would you take to build that trust?
I think a camaraderie, when you're up against the board versus the public, is really very important. Building a trust, I will lay all my cards on the table and let you know that I will come at everything in a strictly nonpartisan manner. I think getting to know each board member, either one-on-one, for coffee, for lunches, for dinners, you know, any kind of team building we can do is also extremely important. I think when you get to know people on that personal fundamental level, all the other noise will go away.
And can you please tell us why you are interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
Having gone to many, many board meetings here in this room over, over the years, I enjoy watching the give and take the board members have, even listening to members of the public. I think you have an extremely important role in the town. I just think it's very important to be able to listen to people, be able to talk to people and show them that you care about the town, about their children and the future.
Thank you.
Although there's an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? And do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
Hours in a month is hard to say. I mean, at least, at least 10 to 20, I'd imagine. I mean, as, as, when I was teaching, I did many things outside of contracted hours. I do have two children who are very busy and active, but I have a supportive family and system at home who knows my, who understand my commitment to public education and how much it means to me to be able to be a Board of Education member and continue my passion of education in that respect. So, if I am selected, I have a big support system that would help show for my children around until my one gets her license. But also understand that I would have to step away from other, I don't really have any other obligations if that's what, work-wise, yeah.
All right, it's up to me. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
I mean, it's just the fact that we're not. So, not much to reconcile, other than just to, to continue to hold strong and to spit those facts out that, you know, we're not beholden to any one person, any one group, or beholden to the students. I live that in my experience as a teacher. I couldn't cater to certain parents, so I'm very comfortable not catering to certain groups of people and holding strong that are, you know, if we find something that's been, that we believe is in the best interests of the students, that's what we're going to continue to, to do.
Thank you. All right, that was all of our eight questions.
Okay.
Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished board members. My name is Daval Shah.
Hi, thank you very much for coming. We have 15 minutes for this interview. We are hoping to get through eight questions. We do have the information, you know, that you submitted. So, you know, we do have that part. But if you'd like to make a statement before we ask questions, you're welcome to, or we can just jump into questions?
Sure. Brief background, I'm sure you have it as well as, I've been a resident for over 20 years within Parsippany. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm a resident of Parsippany for over 23 years. I've worked in Parsippany most of those 23 years, 17 of them, across multitude of companies such as Ipsos and Medmetrics, which is a revenue lifecycle. Most of my career, I have managed large teams. Budget, right now, currently, sorry, I manage currently budget of over $3 million. Most of my responsibilities are a lot of operationally, to essentially go in, revitalize teams, make sure, you know, cut the budget, refresh the budget, and apart from that, innovate. So, a lot of my background is in IT and software management. So, what we go through is consistent innovation in our software as well as education. So, I've been fortunate enough to have two nieces, two daughters, two nephews, through cousins and such, go through the Parsippany system. At the same time, I have been fortunate enough to work in franchisee organizations such as Huntington Learning Center through thick and thin, before COVID and after COVID, and innovate through it. In my current role, we're progressing and innovating a lot, such as, you know, investigating AI, AI tools, working and have backgrounds and met some OpenAI board members and who are also professors or lead departments at Carnegie Mellon for machine learning. Now, how does that help us see our future? It's going to impact us and our students. And I wanna make sure, whatever my lessons learned, that I consistently learn through my contacts, my experience, I can apply. That includes critical thinking, processes, and how the decision-making for young students to high schoolers for their future growth and future empowerment on the fields they want to succeed in. And AI will play a large role in the next two to three years. So, I want to dedicate my time to the board, to the team, to help empower the students of Parsippany. Thank you.
Good evening. My question has two parts. Over the past 12 months, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended or viewed online? And what is your understanding of the role of a board member?
Sure. Unfortunately, I have not, I've not attended any. I just got into the board because I know how critical it is for the growth of our students. I was concentrated on, you know, teaching my kids, nephews, and nieces for the future. But as more and more I got in touch with the innovation of the future, including those with OpenAI members, including those within my school districts, including those at Huntington Learning Center, I knew I had to try something that can make an impact to the future of my kids and the students of Parsippany. And hence why I'm here and why I'm also going to run for election in November. I wanna help and support it. That's the first question, sorry. What was the secondary question? My apologies.
What is your understanding of the role of a board member?
To help formulate and policies that can help empower the superintendent for implementation, for the growth of the students. We're here to empower the superintendent. We'll do our best to review policies that will empower our students for their growth and success in their life.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Board of Education during the 2025-26 school year? And as a board member, how can you help meet that challenge?
Great question. The biggest challenge will be twofold. Definitely in terms of critical thinking, but how do our, how do we empower our teachers with the speed of which AI, machine learning is going, growing in the day-to-day lives? Empowering them, teaching them, teaching ourselves, so we can come up with solutions that empower the teachers when they're teaching the students. It's gonna be huge. We can't avoid it. Secondly, how are we going to teach the students to use these tools? Believe it or not, there will be a truncation of, and it's reality, it's happening now and it's already planned to happen more and more, that the workforce that we're having right now that are doing coding, a lot of manual work will be shrunk down from 100% to 30%. Now, those that will succeed here are going to be imparted in two forms, critical thinking and how to use these tools so they can succeed in the future. Now, the way we can work together for success in 2025, 2026 is how to bring up the curriculum, and my apologies if it isn't already, if we don't have a plan for it already, to empower for each and every grade level the critical thinking process. That's step one. And step two, how to integrate these new tools that are already challenges for the teachers and the faculty, as well as the students, and integrate them within our platforms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Are there any specific aspects of education that have led you to want to serve on the Board of Education?
I would say almost a facet of everything. In terms of what my kids learn specifically, I love learning with them. So, a lot of the questions that they have across the subjects, they help and ask me, how do I learn this better? Because, you know, we were not taught this, we were not taught this. But it's a good challenge. How do I learn it myself? So, one, the facet of self-learning and how to empower after the teacher has provided the guidance, the initial guidance to the students. So, that's self-learning aspect, how to empower the kids. Secondly, parenting. A lot of what we concentrate on is how do we empower the students? How do we empower the teachers? But we forget about how do we train and parent, give training and give virtual training to the parents so that their kids are empowered at home. That's the key thing, like from a parenting perspective that I miss, that I seek advice from other parents. My wife does, other parents do. But if we had a good forum and training for the parents in this future, training courses, whatever be the case, is what I seek to improve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Board members interact as a board and as a member and/or a chairperson of a committee. What personal skills do you possess that can contribute to the board as a whole and as a member or a chairperson of a board committee?
Sure. Couple of things. I'm flexible. I've done all the skills that can help wherever I'm needed and required. One is research, analytical research. Two is data analytics. A lot of data on what works, what will work and provide that aspect. Two is from a leadership perspective, connections within the industry that we can bring in to our districts for as simple as teaming up with firms like AWS, Google for Gemini, as well as Microsoft for, first of all, at the high school level, good initiatives and trainings from their software and software access, not just from a IT programming perspective, but from a toolset perspective on what will help with them. Secondly, from education perspective, before the eighth grade, the tools that can help them grow for that future, critical thinking and analytics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So, board members need to work with their fellow board members and the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust.
Yes.
What steps would you start to building that trust?
Fortunately, I've been in plenty of leadership roles. The very first thing about trust is transparency. Always having transparency in communication. If you have made an accident, it's okay. We're all humans to transpire and say, I screwed up here. Transpire to say, I need help here. To be transparent and say, this is what I think from my experience. But have that open communication, the pros and cons. In the end, the decision-making is going to be all of us together. But the communication of it has to be clear, cut, and transparent.
Thank you. Can you please tell us why you were interested in being a member of the Board of Education?
To succeed the student's future growth. I want to ensure that I did my best to empower my kids, my nephews, nieces personally. And with that vision, the students of Parsippany, like vision, my dream and the vision is, that I see is, how can I make Parsippany the best school and district in the US? That's my goal. How can we innovate together? That's what got me so excited that we have a chance with this changing in technology to be one of the leading fronts in the country to adapt and essentially innovate. And hopefully, I can help with that.
Hi. Although there's an average of two board meetings per month, board members additionally have committee meetings, work sessions, closed sessions, and special events that they must attend. How many hours per month can you commit to committee meetings and board meetings? And do you have any commitments that might interfere with board meetings?
I can be flexible as long as it's, I'm fortunate that I have a great boss. That's one. Two, I'm flexible. That's one of the reasons I applied for the board in thinking that the board will require my time and I will need to be open and flexible whenever it's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To me. Board of Education members are elected to represent all students and the community at large. How do you reconcile this fact with the belief on the part of some that board members are accountable to specific constituencies, communities, or groups?
Never thought. My first thing is to empower the students and the growth. And if I can do that through curriculum, it's every student that's being empowered. That's it. I think if we work together, we're going to be successful together. And curriculums are the same throughout for everyone. I'm sorry, I manage like a team of right now, twenty-two, twenty-five, and, you know, there is, that type of thought process never comes into our head.
All right, that was our eight questions. Thank you very much for coming in and interviewing tonight.
Thank you so much.
Board members, just to remember that there was one other person who gave us his information but was not available to be here tonight. So, just to keep that in mind. So, as part of our meeting, we are up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up now and sign in the book so you are ready when the first speaker is finished. Okay, seeing no member of the public coming up, it is time that we go into executive session for deliberations. So, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Dr. Wright and a second. Mrs. Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there was a lot of development that happened like in the nineties. Public health. There was probably a lot of headaches, a lot of potential for tension that happened. It would be interesting to have it, to speak to people from those areas. So, I had to, yeah, because I know a lot of districts are regional, but they were smaller, smaller towns.
Yeah. I mean, not well, it's part of a regional.
Right. So, it's, it's.
Yeah. I work with mayor. Oh, not close.
Well, when you're a newspaper. If I'm doing my job, I gotta report. You know, I always help the folks. My boss is three years. Not a politician. Where I get trouble the most includes the editors.
Except for.
For Miss Martha. I get lots of letters.
No, I know, you know.
Yes. It didn't, it seems you're aggressive, but. Twenty to thirty percent of the dump is from that. Which basically believe those things. Instead of taking your address to send a letter to trash somebody. The ones that send it back, I call them up and I say, did you send a letter to me? And I'm going to publish it immediately, so you're taking credit for that letter. They're not necessarily quoted, just something you can't write. But there's many, and they're putting their name to it, that's all I care. And unfortunately, it has to let you see.
Some things that you don't let after work.
I got five hundred a day. Yeah. And the way it works, the last thing I publish is on a big, big picture.
Because they haven't built anything.
So, I got really bad writing. I got too many.
It starts. So, that's always good, yeah.
I was. I'm a Republican, but I vote for someone Republican. That's just the way I live.
Did he, were you the first person to have? It was him.
And we won. So, for somebody who's thirty-six years old. I'm a Republican for thirty-six years. This year, the election was the worst. Is that good? I'll be comfortable.
Hi, Erica. Hi, Charlie Taylor. Nice to meet you.
So, that didn't help you.
Yeah, my son-in-law's birthday is today. My daughter goes, so we're going after his birthday? And I go, um, I can't. We're celebrating him Sunday.
Take him all weekend.
Jeff does that, of the thirteen years that we've been.
Justin creates.
His birthday is at, you know, anniversary where he's sat here. I go, okay, so does the meeting, so we'll go.
I feel like.
Oh, I'm like, I'm early September. I'm like.
I get. And you can't, every kid.
It's because Wednesday.
And I tell them all. If you're happy, you're good.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I'm not particularly taken. I don't contribute to anything in my entire life. Because my planning should, if I buy a ticket. Well, it also doesn't have a collection report. Report doesn't have a ticket. So, now, I'm taking support. And I'm not doing that. Unfortunately, Jamie doesn't meet at the last minute. So, he'll call me at the twelfth, you've been at five o'clock. Well, I have plans. I have lots of things going on. Justin was planning two, three months in advance so I can put it on my calendar. I put around, you know. And that was a tough tip.
I was just like twenty-five, I'm all day.
Only over that.
I don't know, I always have.
We had a lot of problems with Syria.
I mean, aren't they, we used to bring food, you know. We used to serve coffee and.
I thought he was the rising star of the Democrats. That he was going to pull that point together and make it.
Yeah, they said world, yeah.
Once he got the power to his head, he changed. And I got along with him all four years. I was probably the last one to say goodbye to him, because I'm in his office. Well, Murphy's was a good job.
Open hands up.
Yeah, well, I'll just say, typically the way I do it is a motion to return to executive session, but if you don't do that, that's fine.
Are we voting on the resolution?
I'm not quite sure I'm fully ready. Exactly.
We both agreed we voted in that room?
No. I don't think so. Normally I would say do the motion to executive session in public, but if you never do that, I'm not so guessing you change what you do. I'm sure we'll get some clarity.
Okay, we have closed our executive session, and I'm going to reopen the public session. I want to thank everybody who came and was interviewed and applied. We obviously had some very qualified candidates, and we appreciate you putting your names in. And, you know, we are obviously only allowed to select one person, but I would, you know, highly encourage you guys who do not get the appointment to apply and run for the Board of Education. The deadline for this year is out, but there is a deadline, there will be three open seats again next year, so I would encourage you to apply. At this time, the board has decided to appoint Nicole Delafave to the Board of Ed. Do we have a resolution?
Yes, Madam President. Resolved that the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education hereby appoints Nicole Delafave to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of board member Andrew Chaffo, effective upon successful completion of the mandatory criminal background check, to serve through the board's organization meeting in January 2027.
And, do I need a motion or just?
A motion in a second.
Can I have a motion to accept that? Mrs. Chappelle and Mrs. Mayor, and can we have the vote, please?
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just for clarity's purposes, this is just a vote on the resolution?
To appoint.
To appoint.
That's the only motion before the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just asking for clarity that this is a vote on the resolution only.
Correct. Yes, this is the only action before the board, so this is what we're voting on.
This points the board, right?
It points the candidate.
Points the candidate, right, okay.
Subject to the background check that's required.
Yeah, right, correct.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Nope.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cogan?
Yes. I'd like to amend my vote now.
What was that? Can I amend my vote before it's over? No. Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to amend my vote.
Change of vote.
Yes. Thank you.
She amended her vote to a no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I amended my vote to a no.
The motion passes.
It still passes.
Okay, roll call vote. So, congratulations, Mrs. Delafave. The oath of office will be administered at the August 21st board meeting, assuming your fingerprint processing is approved by then. There being no further business before the board, I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Mayor, Mr. DeVito, second. We need a roll call on that?
That can be a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
How dare you do that?
Sorry about that, doctor.